Good evening and welcome to the February 27th, 2018, meeting of the Town of Wareham, Board of Selectmen. May I have a roll call, please?
President is Selectman Troppiano, Selectman Scasiotti, Selectman Slavin with no voice, Selectman Titlebaum, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, and Town Council Richard Bowen.
Okay, pledge of allegiance. Hmm, who's my victim tonight? Yeah, I think I'm gonna pick from the back row. Mrs. Bruce.
You shake your head, no, you're in.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Announcements. Selectman Troppiano?
Um, no, I think I'll save it for later.
Okay. Selectman Scasiotti?
Nope, all set, thank you.
Clerk Slavin?
Sorry, put up a mic.
Do you want me to do these? Your voice is kinda shot.
It's okay. If it's not clear and nobody understands me, you can take over. VFW, as everybody knows, they're a nice white sign on Onset Ave that's been destroyed by the storm a while ago. But they are open and running even though there's no sign out front. So I asked them to give us a list of what's going on. So for March 8th, which is a Thursday, 6:00 PM, it's a meet and greet the Wareham Veterans Council, find out information and the agenda for 2018. Refreshments will be served at no cost. Again, that's 6:00 PM and that's Ballpark Ave, is that?
Yeah, Ballpark Road.
Ballpark Road. Next event would be March 17th, 3:00 PM, meat raffle includes prizes and 50/50 drawings. We also have, okay, we have a chicken bake and surprise auction Saturday, March 24th, 6:00 PM, Redmond Hall, Main Street. Tickets are $20. Includes a salad, half-baked chicken, potato, vegetables, rolls, butter, coffee, and dessert. Bring a wrapped item for the surprise auction. It may be something new or repurposed. That was a Christmas gift that you wanna get rid of again. And this is sponsored by the Wareham Firemen's Association. And I also have one more if you give me a minute here. One of the basic ones. It's in the iPad. Oh, it's Mrs. Clay. Would you like to come up and do it again? Sorry, it's not here. And I know you sent it.
The Wareham Minutemen, you got it?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it. I just found it.
You can do it, sure.
It's under the regular emails. Okay. We have, it's basically for the Wareham Minutemen, we have a George Washington dinner event. It's a donation of $10 to buy tickets. The lucky three winners who can bring a guest or six people will have a dinner with George Washington on Saturday, April 28th, 6:00 PM at the Marion Music Hall. You can contact Howie Smith at (508) 295-4679. I will read off the menu. I'm not sure anybody can actually eat all this in one night, but it'd be interesting. The first course is barley soup, venison with sauce, carrot puffs, onion pie, assorted homemade breads with homemade butter, first course. Second course, pears stewed purple, macaroni and sauce, chicken pudding, duck with orange sauce, lattice tarts, is that right?
What's that?
Lattice tarts?
Lettuce, uh, lettuce torte.
Lattice?
Oh, L-E-T-T-I-S, sorry. I just looking at the words. You know, that's how I learned how to pronounce words. Third course, little cakes, apple pie, assorted fruits and nuts, and syllable. And again, the donation is only $10 per ticket, so please step up. It'll be a great time whoever does win that. The other pieces we got is the, there was an announcement a couple days ago of the ongoing saga of the retail marijuana outlets in the state of Massachusetts. The governor last week made comments that he wasn't happy with the social clubs, nor was he happy with the home delivery. The Attorney General then piped up after the governor made his comments a day later and seemed to say the same thing. So I believe it was yesterday, there was a four to one vote by the Cannabis Control Commission, better known as CCC. They voted four to one to go ahead and delay, I think till November, the social club portion of this particular thing that's going on and also the home delivery. I am sure next week I'll have another announcement. They'll probably change it again. The OPL, which is Onset Protective League, there's a few members still left, and WCTV is gonna hold a Candidates Night, March 22nd at Salerno's. They did not give me what time, but I'm gonna estimate somewhere between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock at night. For those who normally see Jerry Barrow sitting at the chair over there, Jerry hasn't been with us for about three or four weeks, so I stopped by the house last weekend. Jerry's back is a little bit off, but he is fine and healthy, so I was really concerned that we hadn't seen him in quite a while. Thank you.
Further on the marijuana questions, I did hear in the media report that the Cannabis Control Commission did say that retail licenses can be applied for beginning April 1st, so they haven't changed that. So the necessity of showing up at town meeting on March 12th and voting in, the restrictions on the number of licenses and the locations of retail locations is critically important. So just a reminder, March 12th, over in the high school auditorium at 7:00 PM, the special town meeting, the only topics on the warrant will be whether to impose a 3% local tax on the sale of marijuana and the second zoning bylaw would be to limit the number and the location of the places. So that's fairly important. Probably not too early to talk about our regular town meeting, just get the thought out there. That is going to be Monday, April 23rd at 7:00 PM. And as always, we will have a special town meeting within the annual town meeting. And I don't think I have anything else. So citizen's comments? Anybody like to speak to the board tonight? Okay, seeing none, which is unusual. We don't have any appointments, reappointments or interviews. We can't start the hearing yet because that's noticed for 7:15, so...
Buzzards Bay?
Well, Mark, how much time do you need?
Five minutes.
Ah, perfect. Come on up.
Congratulations on the Seaport grant.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to Derek, too. Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me in to give an update on the Onset Bay Center project. For the record, I'm Mark Rasmussen, President of Buzzards Bay Coalition, and I have some handouts, a community update flyer that I can hand out to the board and to folks who are here tonight. But I thought I'd summarize, see if the board had any questions, but I thought what I would hit would be update on our fundraising status, the land and access improvements to Wicketts Island, program development this summer's plans for youth programming this summer, the bathhouse rehabilitation plan, and our timeline, sort of where things are at. In five minutes, if that's...
Okay, then.
So getting right to it. So Selectman Slavin started with a comment about the Seaport Council grant. Two weeks ago, we were awarded a $350,000 grant from the Seaport Economic Council. It's a joint grant, so the application actually went in as a Town of Wareham award. Derek was a great help in getting that all together. Both of us were able to go up and present the package, the idea. They were very enthusiastic, and I hope, I hope the grant opens a door for Wareham to lots of other grants through the Seaport Council. I hope it's a beginning of a long relationship there. For us, it's central to our ability to move forward. So I'll jump right into the fundraising status if we can start there. So bringing you back to the main idea for the Onset Bay Center, it's a $5.3 million idea. Within that $5.3 million, it's $2 million in the bathhouse renovation. It's about $1 million each in land acquisitions, staffing, building a staff to run the center, and endowment to make sure that we can keep the prices of the programming at a reasonable level, at a low level for the community. So of that $5.3 million, the Seaport Council grant bumped us over 3.3 million. So we have $2 million left to go, but we raised $3.3 million since this idea started with this board now more than two years ago. So that's, that's the great news. It's been a really nice split between the amount of money raised. Of the 3.3 million, 2.1 million of that is private gifts and pledges from individuals and foundations, private sources of funds, and 1.2 million is government grants, of which 615,000 of that are the two awards from the Wareham Community Preservation Committee to purchase Wicketts Island and towards the bathhouse renovation. So I like that it's a good mix. We've had state, local, and private sources going in. I think we've had most of our applications for our state, federal grants are in or are pending or awarded, so the good amount of the remaining 2 million is in the private fundraising campaign. So for us, that's where our efforts are going to be for the next year as we move ahead on private fundraising. That's the status on the money side.
Sounds okay to me. Keep it going.
Yep, alright, keep it, yeah.
Work it.
Have we matched out the Stifler Foundation monies?
We have not, so thank you for mentioning that. So of the, of the private money raised, 1.2 of it is in the form of a two to one challenge from the Fadden-Stifler Family Foundation. So they challenged us to raise 2.4 million dollars and they would grant 1.2 million. So a lot of our private fundraising goes around that challenge for the next, for the next year. Really quickly on the improvements to some of the properties, because we have a lot of good stuff starting up. So over the fall and winter, the Conservation Commission approved our plans for Wicketts Island. We've also had those now approved by DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. The plans include removing all the remnants of the mansion at the top of the island, increasing, removing a lot of invasive plants and poison ivy that makes it really difficult to use Wicketts, rebuilding the staircase and the stone pier and adding a float in front of the pier to make it easy to land there. So all of that work starts in two phases, the landside work this spring and the pier and the float in the fall. So we're moving ahead with that. Pilot programs, and this is something I'm happy to be able to announce tonight and have it on TV. You know, last summer, for the first time, we brought youth sailing programs in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club to Onset, and we used it, you know, without the bathhouse, without the facilities yet. We really wanted to do a couple seasons of learning, and we learned a lot last year. The biggest thing we learned was youth sailing works great in Onset Bay. We had no conflicts, the space was great, the wind was great, everything worked really well. This year, we're dramatically increasing that. So last year, we did a couple weeks. This year, we're moving to six weeks of youth sailing programs and adding swimming, kayaking, and coastal ecology. So it's full week programs, nine to four, full day. And we're doing that and developing great partnerships with the Gleason Y M C A, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Wareham Care Program through the public schools. So I'm excited about a lot of great partnerships. Behind all of that is great support from the Natural Resources Department, from Gary and his crew. And so the way that folks will be able to get into those programs are through the regular camp providers. So through the Boys and Girls Club, through CARE, and through the Y M C A is where folks should be looking in the coming weeks for the information on getting into those programs for the summer.
Great, yep.
Yep.
There's been comments by people, I run into them because I know I've been involved with this in the beginning, is that, well, we can't afford it, this can be too expensive. I've been trying to explain to them that this is basically a program for everybody. So if you could reach out to the towns, we get on the town website and out to the newspapers, help people who are low income, middle income, whatever, it is open to everybody. Because a lot of people think this is like DEX spray where you're never gonna do it, and this is not the case.
No, and particularly last season and this season, we have Federal Department of Education Grant where we're offering the program. These additional programs are of no cost. The additional sailing is no charge for last year and this year. That won't always be the case. We'll always be striving to keep them affordable, but because of this grant, we're actually able to do it at no cost this year, so...
And that was one of the questions from the Seaport Council, too. That was a big one, so happy to hear.
It's an important piece that just isn't out there yet.
Yep. Bathhouse? Quickly give you the sense there. So this is, this is exciting. So up until the Streets Seaport Council Award, we were really at a point where we were not yet at 50% of the money raised for that project. And so how do you break ground if you know, if you're not there yet? The Seaport Council really gave us the confidence to know that we are gonna break ground this year. So we are now going full steam ahead with construction drawings to bring that conceptual design into real construction drawings and permits. So our design team is Richard Renner Architects from Portland, Maine. GAF Engineering here in Wareham is managing the site engineering and the permitting. Kimi Curio Landscape Architecture from Woods Hole, they're all pulling their efforts together to come up with a design that meets this vision for the bathhouse. So if we can get through permitting this spring and summer, the goal is to then hire a builder and break ground as soon as you'll all let us after the beach season ends, as soon as things quiet down in Onset Beach, in hopes of then opening up in time for the following season. So we open up on Memorial Day of 19. That is the, everybody knock on something for me. That is the hoped-for schedule for this. So I'm excited about that. I think our first place to visit is the Conservation Commission. It's obviously a coastal bank on a beach in a flood zone, so our issues are at conservation first, and so we'll be there pretty soon, we hope.
Awesome.
So that's sort of, the summary is, as folks are thinking about what they'll see, this fall, this spring, you'll see us in for design and permitting for the bathhouse. We'll be on Wicketts, clearing the invasives, clearing the mansion remains, and building a new path. In the summer, we'll be out with the exploration, the sailing and exploration programs for six weeks. In the fall, we'll break ground on the bathhouse, also start on the stone pier and the float at Wicketts, spend the winter and spring on construction, and then all goes well, open up in Memorial Day of 2019.
This should make everybody happy who thought that it might never happen. You know, as it was going along, there was a lot of discussion about whether it would ever get off the ground, and it seems like it's moving around at a pretty good pace, so that's good news.
Thank you.
It was, I kind of smiled about it because Mark just originally said, "I have an idea." And I says, "Okay, how are we gonna do it?" And he wouldn't tell me what it was, so I said, "Come back when you're ready." And I said, "We'll make it happen."
Ten years later.
It's nice to see, because it's a great thing for Onset, it really is.
No, it isn't. Alan was in the vanguard on the Board of Selectmen. He knew I was very much a skeptic.
Yes.
And so he kinda knew he had to sell me if he was gonna get anywhere, and he actually managed to do it, which not many people do. So kudos to Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Getting the town involved in this.
Are you saying you're stubborn?
Yes, he is.
Just a little.
Actually, we had to threaten to put him up.
You know, it's amazing. If you told, if you told me in 2011 I was gonna become a Selectman, I would've been amazed then. I would've been even more amazed if you told me that I would end up supporting the revitalization of Tree Martineau and this bathhouse. I would've said you were nuts on, on all three scores, but yet here I am. So that's kinda what...
But one out of two isn't bad.
Sometimes the office makes the man a nut the other way around, so...
Is that or go up the hill with the poison ivy?
Yeah, there you go. But, no, thank you for all the work and this update, and we look forward to the next update and the next large award from somebody.
Thanks, and us, too. And thank you very much. And to the, to the town, across the town departments, the, the help that we get, the support, folks saying, "How can we help make this happen?" is tremendous. And so I really wanna say thank you to all of you, and, and we're gonna be in this for a while longer. $2 million is certainly not nothing. We still have a lot of money to raise, so we'll keep going.
Great.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
I have some flyers that you guys can...
Oh, great.
...summarize everything I said tonight.
Alright, thanks, Mark.
Well, I'll take it.
It's good to see you.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Good night. Yep, see ya.
Take care.
Can we go back to the hearing?
Yeah, let's go back to the hearing. We have a motion to open the hearing on the inflammable fluids license application from 711 Inc., 3106 Cranberry Highway, east Wareham, Mass.
So may.
Okay, motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. Roll call, vote. Selectman Troppiano?
Yes.
Selectman Scasiotti?
Yes.
Clerk Slavin?
Yes.
Titlebaum, yes. Okay, the hearing is now open. So you have the file there?
We got it mixed in, yeah.
For those that are in the audience, we have some more of these if somebody wants a copy or...
Yeah, there it is.
...thing from Buzzards Bay.
Something got mixed over there.
I'll leave them up here on the column.
What's the other one there?
That's analysis. Oh, good idea.
That one, that one.
I'll let him walk in front of the TV. Get a little excitement.
Okay.
You got everything there, I think.
Yep.
Okay, so you're here for fuel storage and you're here for increased capacity, from what I understand?
Yes.
Correct.
You want to tell us why you wanna go from 24,000 to 40,000 gallons?
Yes. So my name's Marcy Redman, this is Louis Ferrera, we work for AECOM. We're environmental consultants to 711. We were chosen because we're the closest to Wareham. So thankfully, I live just down the street, so... So we're on behalf here, on behalf of 711 for 3106 Cranberry Highway, and 711 will be replacing the underground storage tanks at that location. And so we're looking to increase the capacity from 24,000 to 40,000. That increased capacity will allow for diesel storage as well. So 12,000 gallons of diesel will also be included in that 40,000.
There's 8,000 in the application. 12,000 of unleaded and 8,000, 12,000 of premium and 8,000 of diesel fuel and 20,000 of unleaded. That's what it says in the application.
Yeah, my license here says 20,000 gallons in class two Patrick Diesel.
20,000 is unleaded, 8,000 for diesel, and 12,000 is 40,000.
I got 12,000 for diesel here.
You got 12,000?
We got three USTs. There's 20,000 for gasoline, there's another 8,000 for gasoline, and there's 12,000 for diesel.
It's two, it's two underground storage tanks, one's compartmentalized, so we've got...
Right, so you've got 20 on one side, eight on the other, and then 12 for the diesel tank.
It'll be 12 and eight on one.
Oh, okay.
20 on another.
I gotcha.
The 20,000 gallon tanks.
Okay, so the compartmentalized tank will have both?
Two 20,000 gallon split tanks.
We'll have both, that's correct.
Okay.
One's a split tank, one's a whole tank.
Correct.
So you have 24,000 now?
Yes.
And, and you wanna basically double your capacity, let's say, within a few thousand gallons?
60%, yeah.
My, my concern is, is that it's a DEP-designated Zone 2, which is watershed protection. And I'm a little concerned about increasing the capacity there of fuel. Now, I realize, you know, a tanker holds about 13,500 gallons for delivery, and 40,000 would be three tankers, basically. You know, I'm just roughing the numbers, but pretty close. Three tankers of storage on the site at one time. That's a lot of storage of fuel in a DEP-designated Zone 2 area, which concerns me. How do you, what is your, your answer to that?
Well, these, these will be new tanks, so there are a lot of automatic gauging devices, protections in place, alarms and sensors and things of that nature that will let you know, similar to what old tanks have now, but it's obviously upgraded and these are double-wall fiberglass tanks. They're not the steel construction you may have seen in the 80s, and what the double-wall fiberglass is being industry standard now. And that is, and we're aware of the, of the DEP classification as well. The facility has been part of the DEP, a DEP case filed many years ago for different spills in the past, surface spills, I believe. So the company is sensitive to that, and I think having, first of all, having a double-wall fiberglass is the first step in trying to mitigate anything from, from occurring. Part of that process, just to walk through a little bit, if there were something wrong with the, with the tank, the interstitial monitoring between the two walls of the tank would alert the store and everyone else involved that there is a leak of some sort in the tank, and that secondary wall of the fiberglass would contain that.
Right. Alright, so the thing that also concerns me is that, you know, at this point, they haven't been good stewards. They were shut down because of leakage, gas backing up into the building from the fuel system, and so on and so forth. And, and I don't understand, you know, how that happens when you're required to inspect them and test them once a year, how it gets to the point that it would be leaking, no matter what, for whatever reason, into, into the ground and into the building. And that's, I mean, to get shut down is a bad thing, in my opinion. And then to come and ask me to give you a doubling of your capacity after you've been shut down is really, you know, a tough, tough fight for me. I'm just saying. You know, I mean, I understand the idea of diesel fuel, and if you had come to me and said, "Jeez, we need to put in 30,000 gallons," or, or not 30, but, you know, 28,000 or whatever. You know, I used to deliver fuel for Mobil at night, and I never once, in a Mobil tanker, which had 13,000, six holes, 13,500 gallons of fuel, I never once delivered more than 2,500 gallons of premium fuel to any site. And Mobil stations are quite large, as you know, they're pretty busy. But they don't sell much of the premium, so it's a very small amount. So 8,000 gallons is, is what the split is on this. And then diesel fuel, believe it or not, I never delivered more than about 1,200 gallons of diesel fuel to any one station at one time. And you're asking, as I see from the sheet, for some reason or another, my sheet, I remember going at it yesterday and seeing that it looked to me like maybe I just read it wrong, was 12, it was 8,000 and 12, the opposite. But that's still a lot of extra storage. And 20,000 of unleaded, so what is your unleaded capacity right now? Your, your basic unleaded fuel, your regular?
Right now, I believe it's at 12,000.
12,000?
Yep.
So you're going from 12 to 20?
Yes.
Now, has there been some issues regarding fueling the system at 12,000?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, see, see, in other words, you know, I get the idea, sometimes guys like to play the market, and so they want a lot of capacity so that they can buy at the cheapest time and put it in and make a few extra dollars and do whatever. I mean, that's kind of like what they like to do, and they like to have as much as possible in the ground, because hey, you know, if I can buy it today at this price, next week it's gonna be this price. And they guess, you know, it's kind of a guess thing. I get all that. But in this particular situation, I did talk to Bobby Ethia, I did talk to...
What else?
Requina, I talked to the water department, and I talked to the superintendent who was going to get on the phone and talk to DEP. So I'm actually suggesting that we don't make a decision on this tonight till we hear from him and hear from what DEP had to say regarding the increase in the Zone 2 area. And I also spoke to Dave Pichette, and Dave was, didn't think it was a very good idea at all to increase the capacity. So this is, I spent the time to do a little homework today on this, and mostly because I, and I'm telling the board mostly because I was concerned at the poor stewardship that the system, the station had to get shut, shut down because they couldn't handle what was there. So that concerned me, and I went and I did the homework. And I would suggest, and my suggestion is that the board don't make any decision on this until such time as we at least get the information from DEP as well. And I think we need some time to mull this over a little bit before we make this kind of decision.
Clerk Slavin?
Real quickly, this property is, actually, I think it's in the Onset Fire and Water District?
It is.
Yeah, it is.
I don't have anything here from Onset saying okay or nothing.
Nothing, no.
And is there, their wells are potentially there? Because I believe Mr. Chris, who was across from the Mobil Station on Cranberry Highway on the other end of town?
Yep.
One of the things was stopping him from going in was because there's watershed behind him, if you remember.
Well, that was one of the things that was raised by a potential committee at town meeting. I chastised him afterwards and said, "Three miles the other way and it doesn't run uphill," but nonetheless...
I understand, but I'm just...
Alan's absolutely right. Once upon a time, this was actually Zone 1, which is well protection.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is, is you remember, behind what used to be the old campus headquarters, there's a big pond out there?
Right.
And they used to pump out of that in the summertime and supplement the water supply.
Right. Those are surface water supplies, that's, yeah.
Once they shut that down and stopped using it, they, they changed it to Zone 2. But it's still a very sensitive watershed area. There's a brook that went through there and everything. There was a nursery, there was a problem along it that they had to eliminate. There was a lot of issues in that particular area.
Well, wells 3 and 4 of the Onset Water District aren't too far, aren't too far away from there.
No, they're not far at all. They're out behind that pond, yeah.
They're pretty close. I would like to, I'd hate to put people off, you know, coming back and forth, but I'd really like to see something from Onset saying, "Yeah," because, you know, they have a right to at least chime in.
Yeah.
And I don't think they've been notified. The other piece is that I have the three of butters list here, which shows a copy of the, you know, being sent out, you know, with a copy.
Right.
But I don't have the green cards that came back. I mentioned it to Janet when I looked at it yesterday.
Okay.
And she was supposed to try and get in touch with the proponents to see if they had the green cards.
I talked with Janet, and one of the letters, two of the letters, because they needed signatures, were delayed in delivery because nobody was at the property at the time that the post-delivery man was there. So one of them actually arrived yesterday, and so those green cards now need to go all the way to Texas. So, one of them actually arrived yesterday and so those green cards now need to go all the way to Texas, which is where 7-Eleven is.
Well, normally, like when we do things with the planning board or zoning, if we don't have the green cards...
We typically don't act at that point.
We can't act because we don't have a proof of delivery.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
Well, the proof of notice of the butter, that's what we need. It needs to be accepted or declined one way or the other.
Right.
I would suggest...
Can I make one other thing?
Yeah, yeah.
I just want you to know that I'm not, I'm not trying to... I like 7-Eleven being there. I like what they do, you know, those kinds of things. I don't have an issue with that. It's just that, for me, this is just an unusual request for quite a lot of fuel in a very sensitive area. And, you know, you know, the water is the only thing we have, you know? And I know the tanks are double-walled. I know, I know exactly what they are. Believe me, I'm in the industry, so I understand it all. But the concerns are still there. And everything always works well unless somebody isn't paying attention to it. And oftentimes, things don't get paid attention to when they've been running for a long time normally. People kind of just kind of like, "Oh, it's just going to continue to go, whatever." And things can happen. And I have a serious concern about that kind of issue. And that's, and it doesn't mean anything bad about your company or anything else. I don't want you to think that that's the case. We love you here. We love to have you out there. We want you to do well, you know, and so forth. And I know you sold fuel for a long, long time with the 24,000 gallon permit and I've never heard anything that you're having issues one way or the other. You know, so that's my concern, okay?
Right, and I think to what you alluded to, it is a market-driven decision why they...
Yeah, exactly. I know that's...
We're not privy to that information.
Right, I know you aren't. I'm sure you aren't.
Imagine it's market-driven and just a matter of economics.
I get it.
If we're going this size, we may as well get a bigger size and spend the same dollar for it.
Right.
We do appreciate the concerns too and we can easily, we're easily going to relay that back to 7-Eleven.
Thank you.
When do you anticipate getting the green cards back?
Hopefully, well, hopefully in the next week or so.
Why don't I put this on for two weeks from now? That'll give everybody, that'll give time for the Water District to weigh in and give you plenty of time to get the green cards back. I'd hate to have you come here next week and then have to delay it even further, the green cards, because we don't know if any of those people will show up. While the hearing is open, was there anybody here who had come to speak, either in favor of or opposed to this application in the room?
Look at me.
Sandy?
Do you want to come up and speak now? Or do you want to hold off for two weeks? I'm sure we'll see you then.
Sandy Slavin, it's just a question. If they don't get approval for this expanded tanks, will they replace the ones...
You gotta get close to them.
Sorry, Bob.
Bob, you gotta jack the gain up on those two left mics. They don't pick up very well.
Six inches from the rubber. Thank you again.
Right mic, right mic's sitting there. Left mic's to you.
Just, Sandy Slavin, just a question. If the, if the approval, if you don't get the approval to put in the bigger tanks, would you be replacing the existing tanks with more updated, safer tanks or leave the old ones in the ground? That was just a question. Not for or against the project, just a question.
We, I believe they're nearing their age of 30 years of service.
Yep.
So, they have to be taken out at some point, preferably it'd be this year, but at some point they do need to be...
Exactly. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we come...
Continue the hearing for two weeks.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to continue the hearing for two weeks by Clark Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. Roll call vote. Selectman Troppiano?
Yes.
Selectman Scasiotti?
Yes.
Clark Slavin, title bomb, yes. Okay, we will see you back here in two weeks at 7:15.
Thank you.
If you have an issue with the green cards...
I'll contact Janet.
Yeah, contact Janet, let her know and we can put it off another week.
Okay.
If needs be.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Who's going to reach out to the Onset Fire and Water District?
Selectman Troppiano can. He's already started the process.
Excuse me?
Do you want to reach out to...
Yeah, yeah, I'll reach out to Water. He's actually, was going to call me tonight if he could get ahold of him soon enough.
Yep.
He was going to call me. He didn't get ahold of him soon enough. So, he has, he's going to contact me as soon as he has his conversation with DEP.
And I would suggest that if there are concerns, then they should show up and articulate them at the hearing.
Also going to talk to his board as well. And I will suggest that they come and articulate it.
Yeah, if they have concerns. If they don't, then that's fine. They can just tell you that. We'll just go with that. But if they do have concerns, they should show up. Okay, that's taken care of. We have a request from the Wareham Historical Society to place signs on town property.
I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this. I don't think it's necessary to get up. There's no money involved.
No, there's no money involved. You're fine.
But I'm the director anyways.
Let's see, we have before us requests from the Historical Society for Antiques Fair, Crafts Fair and Car Show. Event locations, Center Park and Tremontale, July 4th. They want to put signs in front of the Toby Homestead, next to Lighthouses at Route 28, which we don't care about because it's probably state highway property. And the town green. I guess you guys are the only people who are supposed to put signs up on the town green.
These are the exact same locations we used and asked for and received permission to use last year.
Yep.
The other place you didn't mention was in front of the multi-service station, multi-service center building. Those will be yard signs. Those will not be banners. And the one in front of the police station is on town property. We will not put it on state property.
Oh, okay. It said lighthouses, so that one's a...
Yeah, so like we did last year, set back from the road so it's not on state property.
Yep.
So, there's, there's two banners and four stick 'em in the ground signs.
Okay.
And it is our 42nd Antique Fair, our second Auto Show and our eighth Crafts Fair. So, we're just saying, save July 4th to help support the Historical Society.
Okay, then. Motion by Selectman Troppiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-1. With Clark Slavin abstaining, thank you. Next up, application from Planet Aid for two collection bins.
Okay.
And we have the file?
Actually, four collection bins in two different locations.
Yes.
Right, that's the administrative file.
Yeah, that's the one from before you went.
Yep.
I've got the other one here.
Why don't you start the application, the locations?
Two in each location?
Two in each location, yeah.
Okay, we have, the first location is 2537 Cranberry Highway. That's the five-star gateway. I think that's the gas station. Okay. And I believe I have...
The other one is the daycare center on Sandwich Road.
Yes, and that's the other one here. You guys want to go through and look at the location. That's on the right-hand side on Sandwich Road, heading out to Route 6 and 28.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, all right, so I think we need to take administrative...
Notice of the file?
Notice of the file. Because there is a, could you read it into the record, please?
Yeah, I'll go through it. And this is the file from previous applications as well as previous enforcement issues regarding Planet Aid boxes in the town of Wareham. The first letter in the file is a letter signed by then-chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Judith Whiteside, which reads, "At the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on Tuesday, July 26, 2016, the Board voted unanimously to deny your application for collection bins at the following locations: Vell's Restaurant, Milltown Diner, Stone Village Motel, Home Depot, Subway and the Gleason Family YMCA." It goes on to say they had to be removed. I will say that subsequently, we had, we did have some dealings with people from Planet Aid who obviously weren't thrilled with that decision. It came to a point where, and I don't know if this, I don't remember this person's name, but it was some kind of regional person involved with Planet Aid, decided that there was no point continuing to fight to put these boxes here and informed us that Planet Aid was no longer interested in putting them in the town of Wareham. So, we were very surprised to receive another application from you. And it was a gentleman. I don't remember his name. Also in the record is a memorandum from Robert Ethier, the town's health agent. This is dated July 20, 2016. And it says, "Please be advised that the Wareham Board of Health has reviewed the memorandum regarding Planet Aid and Green Quest's applications to put collection bins in the town of Wareham. We have had issues, ongoing issues with these companies regarding accumulation of garbage and rubbish outside the bins. The Wareham Board of Health would like to be notified if the Board of Selectmen issues fines for the violation of the collection bin bylaw as we intend to issue fines for violation of our regulations, meaning the Board of Health's regulations." Yeah, and in the file also, various pictures of collection boxes with things like mattresses strewn about, bags of trash sitting in water.
TVs.
Just refuse. Oh, here we have some dilapidated lawn chairs. So, just flotsam and jetsam all around these things. And that was, these pictures came to us from 2015 and they provided the substantial basis for us denying the applications in 2016. So, we're just getting this into the record for the board to consider tonight as we deal with your application anew.
I made a call to the Board of Health today to talk to them about the problems that they had. And specifically, all of them in general, because I wanted to know all the issues. And Planet Aid's name came up because they had considerable issues. They were asked on numerous occasions to come clean up around the bins by them. They never showed up. They would show up, when they finally did, it'd be weeks later before they showed up. And stuff was strewn all about on the streets and every place else. And in my opinion, they haven't been good stewards in taking care of the bins. And it would be my consensus that we don't allow the application of Planet Aid.
Okay, Clark, Selectman Scasiotti? Clark Slavin, something you'd like to add?
I just know that basically, working with the Don't Trash Wareham group, we had to clean up quite a few times in the area and it was, I think they had some of their, I think it was their bins down by the golf driving range as well, which was always a major problem. Never really got cleaned up. We tried to get them to come and they never showed up.
And the other thing too is, I don't know if you noticed, but if you look at the drawing on the one for the five-star gas, you'll see they're to the left of the building. Now, there's a, there's the recycling for the fumes trailer on the side. A lot of the older stations still have those.
Right.
And it's sitting over there and there's a little space right there. And in the location there, there are actually two parking spaces that they have right in that area. They would be in those two parking spaces, obviously. And also would be very close to the road, right, almost right on Cranberry Highway. There'd be 10 feet to the edge of the road from where the containers would be. They'd be very close. The other thing is, is that the location itself has been shut down three times for selling to underage minors for smoke, cigarettes. And they've been shut down by the Board of Health three times. So, they haven't been good stewards either. And as a matter of fact, the, there's some serious consequences coming if they get caught again, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Usually, you don't get three chances either.
Yeah, no, they, I tell you, they, you know, that one of the gentlemen, actually in particular that day, and said, "You sure we can just pay a big fine instead of getting shut down instead?" You know, that just goes to show that they don't understand the levity of the issue or the actual thing of the issue, what's going on when you're selling cigarettes to underage minors, you know?
Well, what's your pleasure?
I move we deny the application of Planet Fitness for both, both locations.
Planet Aid?
Planet Aid.
Planet Aid, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know, Planet Fitness, they've been good.
Okay. Motion denied the applications by Selectman Troppiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. We're sorry. Let's see, next up, continued discussion and possible votes to include articles on special town meeting warrant. And once again, this is the special town meeting within the annual town meeting. It's not the extra special town meeting.
Yeah, I know that.
For marijuana. Just clarifying that for everybody. That warrant is closed. It's posted. And again, that will happen on March 12th. Does anybody have any ideas they'd like to discuss for the special while we're...
I have, I seem to be talking a lot tonight, but it was a busy week. All right, so I have an idea of, one of the issues that came up and is that we, the carriages that are at the various odd supermarkets have been a problem. In fact, if you walk out behind, the woods behind, what do you call it, you'll find two, 300 carriages back there, all just, just rumbled up in a mess. You'll find them in ditches everywhere you go. You're just, I'm telling you, just look as you, you know, you don't pay much attention, but if you look in all the ditches and inside along the trailer parks and you look everywhere, you're going to see a ton of these carriages just pushed down the street and left. And, you know, they're supposed to go and pick them up when they're asked to go pick them up and they often don't. They get told time and time again and they don't go pick them up. So, the carriages continue to lay there. They continue to become our problem. And it, you know, you talk about blight. That's blight, you know, looking over and seeing an old carriage all rusted up and, you know, sitting or whatever. So, there's a very simple thing and I asked counsel to look at it and I think he's probably already done that, that we put a, we put a bylaw on the, on the warrant to, to require that the carriages have locking wheels on the property. It's not really that difficult a thing to do. Aldi's has it already. And you know what? I'm not sure, but I think Walmart might already have them too. All right, I'm not sure, but it's a new place and a lot of times they do them automatically in a new place. They put the thing on so you can't take the carriages off the property. And that sort of eliminates the issue. But also that we should put some teeth in the law that if, with some fines, that if they call, if the Board of Health picks up the phone and calls them and says, "Look, you've got three carriages over there. Go pick them up." If they don't pick them up in a reasonable amount of time, they should be able to fine them. You know what I mean? And have some method of fining them for not picking them up. Because then we have to pick them up and we'll end up having a municipal maintenance or somebody's got to go pick them up and take them and put them down the municipal barn or whatever. And this seems like a pretty simple issue. If they just lock the wheels so they can't push them off the property, we got no issue.
Well, I know in other communities, they do have bylaws on the books. I don't know if they require the locking mechanisms and all of them, but they certainly require the owners to go get them. And in fact, if you are out late at night, sometimes you will see somebody driving around in a pickup truck, picking up shopping carts and that's whoever they, whatever employee or whoever they contract to go, go retrieve their carts from all over these towns. They don't seem to be doing that here, from what I'm hearing.
Let's ask counsel what he's come up with, if you can, please. If you don't mind, let him weigh in. Seeming I asked.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you to, Selectman Troppiano. I have reviewed a number of shopping cart bylaws. And they all seem to have the same theme. They recognize that the owner of a shopping cart can have the shopping cart on his, her or its property. But that should the shopping cart leave that property without the written permission of the owner, it's deemed to be a nuisance. The bylaws require that the owners mark the shopping carts so that you can identify who the owner is. And fine, provides for a fine of the owner of the shopping cart if the shopping cart is allowed to leave the premises without that written permission. So, it treats it as a nuisance, just as you might with, you know, stuff dumped in the street outside a collection bin or just to be apropos of the recent discussion. And that seems to be the approach that other communities have taken. In reviewing the internet, it certainly seems like it's a subject that's been very sore for a lot of communities. So, I'd suggest that if you had a bylaw that addressed it as a nuisance, that might be the way to go.
Well, whatever he seems to think is okay, although I can't understand why it wouldn't just be simple to have a regulation that required it to be, have the locking wheels on the carts. And that kind of, that way we don't have to even chase anything. They'll never be off the property.
Thinking that might be part of the permitting process for the new markets coming in. It might be something that they enter into an agreement with.
Yeah, and we could have some conversation with Stop &amp; Shop and those guys and ask the others to bring them up to standard. You know, say to them, "Look, can you guys get the, put the new system in or whatever?" I mean, it just makes sense to me to make it simple and easy. I mean, you know, it's one thing about fining them, because one of the problems we have, of course, as you know, with the budget cuts and everything else that come along... of course, as you know, with the budget cuts and everything else that come along, we don't have anybody to chase them. You know, how do you send somebody out there? You can't send the police, I mean, because technically if they take them off the property without permission, that's stealing. I mean, the police could actually, you know.
It's a theft, yeah.
And it's over $250 probably for one of those carts, I don't know, but I'm guessing, right?
Larceny over.
So it's larceny over if you walk off the property with the thing. But that hasn't stopped anybody, and how are the police going to be able to do anything like that? You know what I'm saying? That's the only issue. It seems so much easier to just say, locking, in the town of Wareham, if you have shopping carts, you have to have locking wheels. Can't come off the property.
Yep.
Question, Rich, can we actually specify they have to be locking, or they just can't go off the property? Are we allowed to, for business to tell them they have to have this particular type of equipment, where the state doesn't require it?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Selectmen Slavin. I have to say, I don't know. The bylaws that I have looked at so far, and I've looked at about a dozen of them, I haven't seen anything that requires self-locking. However, if we were to add that requirement, what it suggests is that the bylaw be structured in a way that if the AG, which is probably where it would come from, struck it down, that provision could be neatly severed from the rest. So you're...
Makes sense.
You're, you're taking a shot at expanding the law. Maybe it works, maybe it doesn't. Just because nobody else so far that I've seen has, hasn't done, it doesn't mean it can't be done, it just means nobody's tried it yet.
I would suggest looking at the bylaws for Amherst and Northampton, given that they're the most.
I had just finished...
Aggressive in this area, Cambridge, yeah.
Looking at the Province Town...
Look at the university leftist towns and figure out.
They might be the closest in the neighborhoods it had.
Can I ask the board's indulgence that we allow counsel to bring it back next week?
Absolutely.
And that he looks into that, and if possible, maybe that's the way to do it, to put on both parts, and if it's severed, it's severed, and let it stand on its own, and, and let's...
Yeah, leave the enforcement mechanism, even if we don't have a locking mechanism.
Why not, right?
Yep.
I mean, I'm just trying to do, all I'm trying to do is keep us from having to chase people, because we just don't have the personnel to chase people, to be honest with you.
So you want Rich to bring back an actual article?
I would, yeah. I'd like to see him bring an article back next week, if he could.
Yep.
If you can do it in that timely manner.
Yeah, he should be able to.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah. You can craft a bylaw in that time, right? It's pretty simple.
That would be appreciative, thank you.
Thank you much. Anything else anybody would like to think about? And if there isn't any, I will say that the Planning Board did vote a couple of articles.
Stretch code.
Stretch code, and then there were a couple of others as well. So those will be coming before us.
Stretch code?
Yeah, stretch code.
Stretch code's in the new, 100% of the stretch code has been, is in nine, which took place in January. You don't need a stretch code bylaw, it's already incorporated.
You do have to do it going towards a green community, but that's what people need to understand.
Oh, for the green community thing, okay.
Right. That's what people need to understand, though, it's...
Because it's already in there.
It's already there, it's just not going to cost us anymore, it just means we'll be able to get more money.
Yeah, because I mean, I have my copy of nine, and trust me, it's in there.
They said it was coming in this year, whether you like it or not.
So there's that. The Director of Planning and Economic Development is waiting to hear back, to see when the availability is of the person who presented to the Planning Board last night to come before us and re-present again, or maybe it was somebody from syrup, but I forget which. But it's either going to be next week or the week after, because we have to close that warrant coming up, you know, after the 13th is the last date that we have where we meet, we can put articles on, so we'll give you a prize the when they're coming in.
I've got a request, the, as always, a capital item placeholder for the special town meeting.
Just making notes here, going forward. Trying to think if there's anything else.
Did we send the letter to the road commissioners?
You know, I keep forgetting to do that.
Could you do that so that they could get working on that? Because we've had some other issues that have popped up since.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
In that same regard?
Yes, in that regard.
All right.
And, yeah, some trucks, large trucks. So I think it needs to be sent to them so that something can get accomplished, maybe by October.
I think the meeting could soon, for a couple of...
I'll get something out.
I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll get something out tomorrow, and if I don't, remind me, because I'm going to copy the whole board on it, so that you guys can stay on top of me here.
Thank you.
Some reason I'm in a mental block with that one.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do you want to look at that zoning, butter's vocabulary, or not, at this time?
Oh, yeah. The, the local conservation bylaw is one of the wackiest notice provisions of anything I've ever read in my life. And essentially, it calls for five business days' notice to people of something that's going on. They draw a distinction between a notice of intent filing and a request for determination of applicability, which I don't understand, because you can have activities occurring with an approved RDA that are five times more noxious than anything that happens under a notice of intent. The definition of a butter is grotesquely unclear. I couldn't defend this law if I, you know, pulled every trick in the book if I went to the court, if somebody argued they didn't get proper notice. So we had a situation come up last week where the Conservation Commission did agree to continue a hearing because the notice provision was just so screwy. I can certainly reach out to the Conservation Commission and tell them that we intend to do something and put it on the warrant, maybe get some of their input. But I mean, to me, notice is notice, it shouldn't matter what board's involved, people should have adequate notice, applicants should be able to read the thing and figure out who the hell they have to notify, and a butter should know if they're in the loop or not just by reading the bylaw. So I think that's something we might want to get on the, on the special as well, just to clear that up, so we don't have a repeat of the mess from last week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Just jot that down. Even the conservation agent struggles with what's in there, and he deals with the thing every day. Okay, is that it for the special? Okay, does anybody have any 48-hour business? Selectmen Tropiano?
Nope.
Selectmen Scasiotti?
Nope.
Clerk Slavin, title bomb, no. That brings us to you, Mr. Sullivan.
We've just been really working on all the activities, so nothing really new and exciting to report.
So you're getting the stuff done that we've been grinding on you about, basically?
You set the policies.
Okay, very good. That's the best report you've had in a while. Liaison initiative reports, Selectmen Tropiano?
You know, I've talked enough tonight. I have, I have some stuff, but I'll save it for next week.
All right. Selectmen Scasiotti?
Nope, nothing from them.
Okay, Clerk Slavin.
Okay. Audit committee met last Thursday. We have a draft management letter. We went through it, and I believe this is going to be probably the best management letter that the, since I've been around for 13 years, virtually everything is up. The few things that the, that the accountants or the auditors look at, they have a different way of doing it, we're doing it a little differently, but it's acceptable, so everything has a solid answer. So I don't know how, if there's anything else, but just to thank our town administrator, all his department heads and all his employees for the really great job they've done. We were, six years ago, we were the DOR watch list for everything.
Yep.
You know, we weren't going bankrupt, but we sure weren't going very forward. Also, for the town administrator, I want to make a comment again. Plymouth County kind of challenged them to make the county government more viable, and they have a couple of programs. They have a Peacock program, and they have a Mayflower Health Program. We were unfortunately, back about seven years ago, we took a million and a half dollars out of the Health Trust Fund, I think, about.
Yeah.
It took us four years to fix that mess. DOR said we really shouldn't do it, someone didn't listen. And basically, by going into the Mayflower program, which I did mention to Derek, because it wasn't my idea really, it was the Wareham Firewater District that had used them, and they said they saved a substantial amount of money. I believe the first year they saved us about $600,000. And with the, we had no increases over three years, and also, I think this year we're up, but we're up less than everybody else. And the other piece we put in was what they call Gatsby 45, which most people don't know about, which is the unfunded liabilities for retirement, et cetera, that all cities and towns have. Wareham, I think, was in the 60-plus million dollar range, God knows what the city of Boston was, or the state of Massachusetts. Again, the town administrator, when the plan became announced and stuff, we were number one going into the plan, I believe, because of the money going in so far. I think our liability has dropped by close to 14 or 15 million dollars already from where we were. And that has to go on your balance sheet now, which for 2019, for everybody. And if you haven't started to fund the Gatsby 45 for shortfall, it affects your bond rating, et cetera. So we are in good shape. And again, I don't know, I don't know what to say, except thank you, because we are tight for money and everything else, but we are, as far as the DOR is concerned, we're one of the few towns they look at and say, "This is how you turn your town around." So, again, thank you.
Thanks goes to the, you know, the department heads and the employees there. They're doing all the work, and we really appreciate it. Finance Director John Foster, Town Account Judy LaZon, and as you know, there's many, many more. I'll probably get a bunch of texts for not mentioning people, but, and, you know, following the, and I appreciate the support on setting the policies and the goals so that we can actually enact this. And I know it's not, not easy, and we have a lot of pressure to go back to some of the bad ways, if you will, but I appreciate all the support from the board. Thank you.
Also, this Friday is Legislative Breakfast for the MMA in Fairhaven. I'll attend that, but if any of the Selectmen want to come, it's 8:30 in the morning at Fairhaven Town Hall. We'll have legislators there, there'll be probably state senators, state reps for that area. And actually, it covers, even though it's in Fairhaven, it's not just southeast Mass, it would probably be Cape and the Islands. Excuse me, and I expect some of Plymouth County. I did get a note from Jean Fox, who's the person who heads up South Coast Rail. She sent me a note asking if we would make comments, and I'll give it to you, Peter, again.
Yep.
Which is separate from the other one, about what we'd like to see in there. They have a meeting scheduled, unfortunately, for Tuesday at 6:30, which makes it kind of difficult for us.
Yep.
To be there, so we need to basically put the comment again about the Cape Flyer route being included in the, in what they call the DEISE, I think is the name of the program that they got there. So that just came down the line. The last thing, and we need to keep after this just because it's, I think it's important, and I believe the board is completely online with it. I don't have any updates on the, on the, any kind of remediation or mitigation on Route 6 and 28 for basically businesses yet, but I've been keeping after it. And as far as the program for the timeframe of Route 6 and 28 for the road to get done, we have made the request that they try and do it in a year to a year and a half, and I'm waiting on that, but I'd like to make sure that we keep after that so we don't forget it.
Yeah, they will.
Thank you.
I do owe them a letter, so they'll be getting one this week.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Let's say a couple of things. Tomorrow at noon, Town Administrator Sullivan and I will be meeting with the Massachusetts Secretary of Housing and Economic Development to talk about 40B issues, and specifically to find out what the Department of Housing and Community Development thinks about the matter of including mobile homes in the 40B counts on the subsidized housing index. So this is just an initial conversation. It's just so that we can, we can sort of see what they think, they can sort of see what we think. But certainly, we want to thank Representative Gifford for her efforts in arranging this meeting. You don't get to speak to cabinet secretaries very often, that's just a fact of life, and we were appreciative, actually, to have Secretary Ash down here this fall for a couple of hours to drive around town and look at things, because not everybody gets that either. So that was another thing that Representative Gifford arranged, so we have that, following up on that, and I would say that tomorrow night, you've got a couple of interesting choices if you want to attend town meetings. The School Committee is doing a budget rehearing, I'll call it, because they already had the mandated one in December. The second one is the application from Dakota Partners, Inc. for the 174-unit 40B project down on Cranbury Highway. We will have selectmen at each one, and I think they'll both be interesting. The School Committee will be live on WCTV, and the ZBA will be taped, you'll probably want to watch both.
Okay. You know, I knew I was going to be quiet, but, all right, so, so as you well know, I belong to that committee for, that runs the drop-in center and so on at the church, the Good Shepherd. And I happened to talk to the other day, they're going, they're going to be opening the medical marijuana facility in April. I don't know what that is, but they're going to be opening the medical marijuana facility. So I was talking to Shelley Storm, who is the, in charge of the medical marijuana facility, and I told her that I was involved in this, this committee and so on, and she said she had read about it and blah, blah, and she was interested. And the interesting thing is, you know, the medical marijuana facility is a nonprofit, and the reason why they put it together was to use money for outreach of these kinds of issues, to try to help with drug addiction and interdictant programs. So as was, I was talking to her, she said, "You know, jeez, we'd like to help them," you know, and so on and so forth. So I was able to hook the two of them up, and it looks like they're going to give them some funding, which is just awesome, because the group is working so hard and they're actually doing something. And, you know, and nothing like a little bit of infusion money to make it even work better, you know how that goes. I mean, that's always a thing. Money is really what makes this all work, and the more, more that can get into the system to help with these issues, the better. And so that was really kind of nice. And I know a lot of people think, "Well, you know, marijuana, blah, blah, blah," and some people are against it, and some people are for it, and so on and so forth. But it's here to stay. And if the medical marijuana facility, by the way, which will end up tying up one of those licenses we're talking about, if they're going to use their money to help with outreach and, you know, you know, drug addiction and those kinds of things, let's do it, you know what I mean? Let's, let's use the money, and let's get them to help out in the community in whatever they're going to do. They're very much apparently involved right now in a bunch of, a bunch of issues, even though they're not even open yet. So that's kind of nice, I thought was kind of nice. And I just want to thank them for anything they do for that committee, because they are really helpful for a committee that's really, really working hard to do a good job for everybody. So the other thing is, is I, I went to the school building design committee meeting, and for the two schools, the emerging of the two schools and what have you. And it was an interesting meeting. I think it, you know, like everything else, it's, it's big, there's a lot of things to talk about and so on, but I think there's going to be some redefining at some point, because it does seem like, in my opinion, that it's maybe getting a little too blue sky, as they say, you know, you know what I mean? And it'll probably end up getting pulled back, but that's okay, I mean, it's part of the process, and everybody gets to say what they have to say, and it's kind of nice to see the teachers at least be excited and weigh in to something, you know, where they work every day and they do this kind of stuff and everything, and it's nice to see that. But ultimately, there has to be some reality, too, and I think, you know, that'll be coming as time goes on. But it was interesting to go to and to see what they've done so far, and so on and so forth, so I was able to go to that. And tomorrow night, I'll be with Derek at the, at the school budget promote, issue, so...
Yep. Just for Patrick, there's a drug workshop in Brockton at the Fuller Craft Museum on March 9th at 8:00.
Yeah, you mentioned that, you were going to go, so I...
Well, if you can't go, I'll go, but this is really...
No, I'd like to go. I remember you sent me a thing, and we talked about it, and I said, "Yeah, I'd go."
It's Plymouth County's involved with this, which you...